Talking about the City of Newcastle, it's COVID-19 Community and Economic Development Resilience Package. Firstly, our sincere apologies for those people who've been waiting for a few minutes. There's been a couple of technical difficulties on our end, but we're here now and really looking forward to having this discussion. Just from the start, Nathaniel and I will be discussing through the package today, but there's an opportunity for you guys to ask questions on the comment field of the video. We'll be seeking to respond to them at the end of our presentation. So just to start with, I'm Simon Massey, Economic Development Facilitator at the City of Newcastle.
I'm Dr Nathaniel Baverton. I look after the Smart City Programme for the City of Newcastle.
And today we understand that we're speaking to the board members of the Business Improvement Associations of Mayfield, Hamilton, Newcastle and Walzent. We also have a number of businesses within these precincts who have joined us. Thanks also to Steve Waite and the team at the Business Centre for helping to spread the message to their network, and also to Bob Hawes and Amy Delor from the Hunter Business Chamber, who've spread and encouraged people within the Business Chamber network to join us this morning. I'd like to start by acknowledging that Nathaniel and I and many of you guys are sitting on the traditional lands of the Awabikul and Waramai people. We pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. It's also really important to, from the start, acknowledge that there's many people in our community who are suffering from the public health disaster that is COVID-19. As we came in today, we understand that there's 26 people in ICU across Hunter New England Health, and that's having obviously a devastating impact on themselves and of course on their families as well. And we want to acknowledge and pass on our best wishes on behalf of council to them. And then the corresponding impact is the economic disaster that's being faced both in Newcastle, across the country and across the world. And that there's many businesses who aren't operating or are operating in a very different circumstance to what they're used to. And that's creating lots of pain both for themselves and for their employees, and we acknowledge that right from the start. We hope that the package that we're talking about today, which was endorsed by council last Tuesday evening, will in a small way be able to assist you and others through this challenging time, which as we know is likely to extend up to six months. As I said from the start, we're going to have a discussion here for the first 20 to 30 minutes about what's included in the package and what was endorsed by council last Tuesday night. And then following that, we'll seek to answer as many questions as we can from the YouTube platform. Also need to note that we are adhering to social distancing and hygiene rules here. The deception of the depth here is that we are sitting a metre and a half away and the hygiene here in the middle is being well presented. This package that we're going to talk through was developed over the last three and a half weeks. It was done with consultation with many people and businesses across the city. It's also only the first step, so this is phase one that we'll be presenting today. There'll be other phases and there'll also be other webinars to talk through some of this information. The initial package was an investment of 5.5 million in the city. And I'm just wondering, Nathaniel, whether you could talk through how council developed this package and what the principles were that it was designed upon?
Thanks, Simon. I think we'd all be forgiven right now for suffering in the effects of whiplash, such is the pace of change that we're confronted with on a daily basis. It goes without saying that we have two overlapping challenges, the health crisis and the economic disruption wreaking havoc on our everyday life. We are fortunate in the Hunter as yet to have avoided any loss of life. The same cannot be said for loss of livelihood. So we understand that there's a lot of pain in the community out there right now already, and it's a challenging forecast, we need to confront that. The COVID-19 pandemic is having unprecedented and comprehensive impacts across the local Newcastle community and economy. But we're not alone here. This is a global crisis, but with profound local effects. At City of Newcastle, we're doing what we can. We've established the multi-phase approach, as Simon mentioned. What we're talking through today is only the initial. It is calibrated around responding to the immediate challenges of the health crisis and the emergence of the economic impacts. There'll be more phases to come. The dynamic nature of this challenge requires an agility and a capacity to act decisively on the available information. And that really is a key point. We're working here in a scenario where the responses that are developed are at best based on partial information, often overtaken by circumstances, days, sometimes hours later. This is a very extremely fluid situation and a challenging policy environment. We're casting an eye forward to the second and the recovery phase of the pandemic, and this will require a collaborative strategic approach from a wide range of city partners to ensure that the depths of the crisis is minimised and that our capacity as a city for recovery is maximised. And these are really our twin goals. We gave consideration to a range of principles when we were formulating the package. And bear in mind that this all happened in very short time with input from a wide range of people. The first thing that we were really closely cognizant of was that we needed to supply direct action to support our community wellbeing. The second is that we're aware of the cash flow challenges for small business. So we really wanted to take a look at what we could do around timely responses to support cash flow. We wanted to focus on innovative programmes that provide long-term strategic benefits, things that we might want to be thinking about anyway that we could get started on now. Fourthly, collaboration is key, it's always key. And we wanted to make sure that what we were developing was able to dovetail with announced state and federal initiatives, but also the range of actions that are happening and emerging across the city. Finally, financial responsibility for the organisation to make sure that when we come through the other side of this, and there will be another side, that the organisation is still in a sustainable position. So Simon, would you like now to be able to outline for us the various economic focused measures?
Yeah, very much so. Nathaniel, I think the context here is to recognise that the economic measures are specific, particularly for small business in Newcastle, but also recognise that people are at the centre of small business and that people send it in their approach. So there's no ability for us to say anything is business as usual at the moment, because this is something, a crisis that impacts all people. And so therefore our response has to be focused first and foremost on the people challenges that exist. Just to go through, so there's four components to the economic responses that we've put in place. Firstly is financial hardship support. So the City of Newcastle currently has a financial hardship programme. It's available for all residents and commercial property owners, and it enables them to develop a payment plan. Within this programme, we are providing interest free on all payment plans through to the end of June next year, so 2021. So this provides an initial cash flow relief for property owners and residents. Noting that revenue has potentially gone to zero at the moment, there would be an ability to be able to not have to pay any rates for an extended period of time, noting that those payment plans can be developed over that 15-month horizon that we've provided.
Simon, how did someone go about applying for the hardship package through City of Newcastle?
Yeah, great. The easiest way to do that is to call our customer contact centre. Details are available on our website. They'll be able to then walk through the process with you. It's one phone call, simple, no evidence is required to support that other than that initial phone conversation. We're trying to make it as easy as possible for people to engage with this. Second programme that we've put in place is procurement and purchasing support. So the City of Newcastle recently endorsed a new procurement policy which puts a minimum local weighting assessment of 10% on all of our purchases that we make, where possible, through to the end of September. So the end of the September quarter, we'll be lifting this weighting to be able to prioritise and support local businesses. In addition, we're also seeking to fast-track the invoices that we receive from local suppliers, ensuring they're processed as fast as possible. Ideally, that will be within, as soon as that invoice is received, we'll be seeking to process that within our system.
Simon, how do we define a local supplier in the City of Newcastle? The Hunter is notoriously intermixed, you know, both in the economy and its population.
Yeah, that's a really interesting question, difficult to answer. Recognising that both the location of the business, where the staff live and operate and where the business broadly operates all need to be considered in that space. And we're largely flexible with that definition at this stage. Third programme that we put in place is broad flexibility within our existing fees, charges and policies. There's a whole range of measures here. These include waiving of all library fees. And we've also introduced more flexible delivery times and truck movements around supermarkets, support for doctor surgeries to stay open longer, restrictions on the use of footpaths have been eased, return booking fees to people and organisations who've booked with city venues, and also committed to holding hourly parking rate at its current level for 12 months rather than the proposed increase there.
There's a long list of ways that the City of Newcastle can ease the burden. Are we stopping there or is that like an ongoing process to identify new opportunities?
Yeah, and as Nathaniel said throughout, this is the start of the process for us. This is the list and the focuses that we've had so far. We're definitely looking to expand that list and acknowledge that we need to be flexible to the environment that our businesses are operating locally. And just the final piece from an economic point of view is rent relief for City of Newcastle tenants. So we're providing a 50% discount on rent for all CN owns buildings for both the June and the September quarter. This has provided initial cash flow relief for all small businesses and local community groups that are operating out of these premises. This sort of aligns to the message that the Prime Minister provided last night as well.
Yeah, great. I mean, I think that's a really important example of how what we're trying to design needs to fit around and complement and augment the different initiatives coming out of state and federal government.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And that's, as we said at the start, the premise that we're trying to operate here is to stay within the local government mandate but help wherever we can, that aligns and supports to what the federal and state initiatives are doing as well. So I've gone through the four economic components, Nathaniel. I'm wondering whether we can outline each of the community focus initiatives now, maybe starting with the expansion of the e-library?
Yeah, let's do that. So the City of Newcastle has 90,000 library members, which is fantastic. This particular initiative is about expanding the scope of e-learning opportunities, and that's from different forms of digital platforms for streaming media to online books, press readers, a couple of different streaming platforms are available, music streaming that includes the Sony Music back catalogue, access to National Geographic online. So really, this initiative is about what can we do to provide a means of alleviating boredom or providing educational opportunities for people who are in these unfortunate circumstances of self-isolation?
That's a challenge for everyone at the moment, self-isolation and being able to engage and enjoy that time wherever possible. And just wondering in terms of the e-library, is this an initiative that's only available for residents of the Newcastle LGA?
We currently have about 15,000 people who are members of our library who are not from our LGA, and it's open to all comers, so please jump online to the library website, sign up and access these. I should just note that there's a lot of child-friendly content on there as well. So if you're trying to do the juggle and the balance of homeschooling and entertaining kids at home, there's a lot of material here that you can take advantage of.
Just wondering whether you'd like to outline the online learning and training that's available for people as well through the library?
Yeah, this is really an important piece for us. We appreciate that businesses are standing down staff, and that might be just in a hiatus mode. Intention in this initiative is really to provide a means for businesses to do some training in this period of reduced activity. So via the library, e-library platforms, we're expanding our access to the Lynda platform. Lynda is a function of LinkedIn and has over three and a half thousand online courses available, short courses, sort of micro credentialing, that will give people an opportunity to sort of maybe pursue a new skill or to change the way that their business is organised. And that's really important for us. Also in this initiative, we're funding an expansion of a programme called Studiocity, which is an online tutoring platform. So providing one-to-one tutoring for students from late primary through to HSC and those people will be able to access some individual encouragement and tutoring to make sure that studies remain as on track as possible. And we know that that is a challenging situation going forward.
I understand as well with Studiocity, there's a first and second year tertiary component as well. So there are ability for new uni students, particularly at the University of Newcastle, to have some support, also for take courses there as well.
There's probably an opportunity for university students to register as tutors as well.
So there's a huge range of learning options in Lynda. You talked about over three and a half thousand courses. What is the City of Newcastle hoping to achieve by exposing this e-learning platform to business, businesses across the city?
Well, I guess our intention is that we're entering a period of what the Prime Minister would call hibernation. This is really, not to underestimate the challenges associated with that and the impacts on the business, but this really is a chance to take stock, to undertake some new learning. So what we're doing is we're curating a number of pathways through the Lynda programme that might help people to change their business model, to get online. So how do I open an online store? How do I market effectively online? It might be about how do I manage remotely, which is a situation we're all in at the moment. So there really is a wealth of opportunities inside this platform. And I guess what we're hoping for out of this particular initiative is that businesses might come through the other side with a slightly different offering that positions us for the future as a digitally-enabled small business sector.
Thanks Nathaniel, that sounds really important and valuable for the community at this time. Thinking about the context of where we're sitting today, so it's Monday morning, the thirtieth of March. Yesterday, the Prime Minister made an announcement about a one-point-one billion dollar programme in the community space. What's Newcastle's role in the community space and how are we supporting our local not-for-profits and local organisations that are right down in the grassroots serving those who are vulnerable and in need in our community?
I just think this is such an important aspect of what we can do. We must mobilise to support the organisations who are at the frontline of the health challenge and also looking after those people who are most impacted by social isolation, by mental health wellbeing and maybe just access to the food and the medicine that they need to get through their daily life. So we have an initiative around a community grants programme. This is really in a couple of stream ones. One is pushing money out very quickly to those most, those entities that are most able to help those at risk. And secondly, a grants programme that we look to have up pretty soon. And this will be about supporting the not-for-profit sector, the NGOs and those community groups who are really at that frontline for us as a city in maintaining the health and wellbeing of our community.
Absolutely critical at this point. As some of the information that the Prime Minister talked about yesterday, the spikes they're seeing in mental health problems, domestic violence already, I think there's a real local story and a local way that council can support in this space. I'm just wondering what kinds of community support activities we're looking to fund through that programme? Is there anything specific which you want to detail today?
Well, it's certainly those volunteer organisations, I guess, that are already in place. Our strategy here is that we want to support organisations who are in a position to be able to ramp up their current offer or otherwise who have identified a gap that is not currently being offered, that has emerged to a critical status. I guess that that's our position is that we're looking to support existing organisations through this funding stream to do what they do better, bigger or faster.
Great. Sort of broadening the community lens to thinking about wide industries as well, which clearly has a link to business and the economy as well, is that there's lots of industries that are being unbelievably hit at the moment, more significant than others. What's the city's role in this space and how are we responding?
Well, a couple of ways. I think that I mentioned at the outset that we're starting to cast an eye to what mechanisms are required to steer us through the recovery phase. And first and foremost there is bringing together the leadership of the city to look after our own. So we're establishing a city task force. We're still working through the process of the EOI and the governance arrangements of that. That task force will be given the responsibility initially to distribute a, through an EOI process, a grant funding stream to those critically hit industries. And we know that tourism has taken a real hit and the arts and cultural sector, retail, you know. So we'll be looking to engage with those sectors and those industries and find out how that funding stream can be best targeted to support their specific needs.
And I think as you said, there's numerous industries that have been impacted through this and using that task force to be able to effectively identify them and to respond in a local way, in an innovative way locally, would be really important for this initiative. Lean-in Newy, what is Lean-in Newy? Are you able to describe the work that's happening there and what that might look like?
Yeah, so Lean-in Newy is a, it's a digital platform. It's around incentivising both social action and then some economic activity. We'll be using sort of challenges to encourage and incentivise and nudge behaviours in the community. And that activity can then be harnessed into economic incentives that are built in to increase expenditure in our local businesses to support that recovery phase. So the example we've been running with for a couple of weeks when we've been trying to articulate this idea is that a not-for-profit like Meals on Wheels, it needs support to ramp up its distribution capability. People volunteer through the Lean-in Newy app and then by doing that, they earn and accrue points inside the app platform, which they can then redeem with local businesses. So the City of Newcastle will be supporting local businesses to supply those rewards. So there's no hit on businesses to do this. And we think it's a really important way to harness and guide the desire of Newcastleans to do good and support their local community. The range of actions will be very wide indeed and they'll move from incentives to buy local to make sure that that money that you're spending is directed to your local businesses, actions designed to cultivate community connectedness as well, at the scale of the suburb, the street, at the neighbourhood.
I think as you said Nathaniel, there's lots of goodwill that exists in the community in Newcastle, nationally, globally. People want to make a difference and I think this app will be a really great way of galvanising that good community will that exists across the city. Using ourselves at the council as a coordinating piece, we're receiving lots of information about needs across the city to be able to then push that out to our residents and drive that community goodwill and that social action across our city to have the greatest benefit and at the same time get that economic reward as well, which I think is really important.
I think it's really, it gives us that sort of a two-pronged attack. But really, that sense of goodwill is out there and all we want to do through this app platform is to, I guess, harness it and direct it to places where it can best serve the needs of the city.
Yeah, great. Obvious question, what's the timing look like for it? When, we know the app's in development now, when should people expect to see it?
We'll be looking to go live towards the end of April. So we are working around the clock to get this thing established. People who are in digital economy understand that these platforms don't create themselves. So and there's a lot of work to make sure that we are able to build it in a way that delivers on those objectives of directing energy to the places of greatest need.
Yeah, great.
So stay tuned, there'll be some columns in marketing in the next fortnight around it.
Fantastic. Final programme that we want to talk to today before we start answering some of your questions that have been coming through is an online training programme has been proposed and is in train. This sort of follows on from the earlier conversation we talked about Lynda and Studiocity. How is this programme different and what will it look like for small businesses and residents in Newcastle?
Sure, well, I guess it's different in a couple of ways. We wanted to create something that's more structured. If Lynda is a bit of an online smorgasbord and sampler, businesses might go through that process and identify areas where, yeah, there's a business need for us to develop some new skills in a particular space. So we'll be looking to build a slightly more structured training programme for local small businesses. The second aspect of this is that we want to use local training providers to deliver that. Predominantly we'll be online, given the constraints that we're operating in. But that really is the intention, is to build something that might stack up to some more formal accreditation or something that can be a bit more crystallised in your business process.
And that'll add social capital for the business and also when this hibernation, when this change finishes, potentially enable businesses to come back stronger than they might otherwise would have. Acknowledging that there's many challenges and lots of pain that exist before that time as well. So it sort of brings a summary that we've discussed through of the ten programmes that were announced and endorsed at council last Tuesday night. As we've said all along, this is phase one, there will be a phase two. This is still underway and there'll be opportunities for business to be able to engage with us through that. Some of the concepts that are being worked on for phase two looks at a bigger and broader infrastructure programme for 2020-21, where we can to be bringing forward initiatives from future years that have already been identified. Looks like an events programme and I know that's a bit difficult to talk about at the moment, but to be, when public health and safety can be guaranteed, to be ready to be able to roll out a new and improved events programme. Also, it looks like a vision as well. So it's an opportunity for us to think about and provide hope in a future for what Newcastle could look like once safety returns and once the community is available to be, for people to be out and about again. All of those things are happening in train at the moment so that when the time comes, they're able to be rolled out quickly as well. As I said, there'll be more webinars, there'll be more information to come in this space and we'll be seeking to support and enable our community wherever we can. Now, we have a few questions. I might go, I might ask a couple and then we'll feed off on a couple of them. So firstly, will council be measuring the impact of phase one in this resilience package? And will we be providing that information to businesses and the broader public?
It's really important that in this initial suite that we have the capacity to be agile in terms of repositioning to ramp up those initiatives that seem to be having the greatest impact. It's very hard to do that without information. So we've been reaching out already to both local research providers and also some international experts. So we definitely have a programme in train around building out our city analytics capability to understand the impacts of these and to provide that insight for changing direction if required. Do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I think that's really important around the agility that we need to have at the moment. I think as we all know, the news is changing hour by hour. There's potentially been a Prime Minister announcement around wage subsidy while we've been talking to you guys today, for instance. So things are changing, so it's really important that our programmes are announced and clear but also have the ability to pivot and change as required as new information comes forward. And that's definitely the focus with this city analytics piece that we've added to our programme to be able to evaluate on the fly.
I've got a question for you, when will phase two be rolled out? Do we know that yet?
Phase two is definitely the long story, it's the road to recovery for Newcastle. So recognising that the challenges are still being heaped on us day for day. The intention with phase two is definitely to be rolling it out in the next financial year. Significant council investment in infrastructure, if possible, in events with a new vision and a whole range of other aspects that are being considered as well. The intention will be for that to be presented to council over the next couple of months as well.
Correct.
Another question here, could you tell us more about the help that's available for not-for-profits who don't employ people? So is it just for not-for-profits who are employing in large or is there opportunities potentially for smaller, more localised neighbourhood even? So as organisations or groups of people who are seeking to make a difference for their community?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So obviously, the community grants programme will be supporting not-for-profits. So there'll be some, the grant funding guidelines are looking to get out by Easter. So that's really a watch this space and that certainly would be able to support not-for-profits of any scale. We also have through the Lean-in Newy app, a funding stream that is about supporting community groups to develop ideas that will make a difference in terms of their connection to their local community. And that's something of these small-scale grants, but really to get something up and running quickly is the intention there. So we've got a few ideas.
Thanks Nathaniel. Another question, are residents who are distance learners eligible for both the online training platform via Lynda or the online training platform provided by local suppliers?
Sure, so certainly anybody can register to become a member of our library and that will provide you access to the Lynda courses, to Studiocity and to that huge suite of e-library content. So there's no doubt there. In terms of the second training programme, we won't have to take that one on notice. We're still working through the details of that programme.
I think the intention with the second programme in particular is to first and foremost prioritise small businesses operating within the Newcastle LGA and provide both their owners and managers as well as their staff access to those accreditation courses and the ability to increase their social capital within their organisation there.
A new question in from the feed. Hey team, any thoughts from council regarding a tourism promotion package when travel restrictions etcetera are lifted? Tourism supports a lot of various industries, restaurants, hotels, etcetera.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that's really important. And this actually, time provides us a good space to be exploring and considering within the tourism sector, what could that look like for Newcastle moving forward? Could that be different and more significant for the city? I know there's a destination management plan process that's underway and I think our intention will be to release and then implement a whole range of programmes out the back of that, once these travel restrictions start to be lifted or have been fully lifted so that we have that opportunity to be pressing hard into that space.
Another one for you Simon, Newcastle City Council rates are the largest expense my shopping centre pays. What are we doing to ease this burden on the centre itself so that these savings can be passed on to tenants?
Yeah, great question and very much cognisant and recognise that that exists for lots of small businesses. First and foremost, City of Newcastle has halved our rent for all of our properties. We are reaching out to large commercial property owners across the city, encouraging them to consider applying the same measure themselves. We've had a number of conversations and we know a number of commercial property owners who've either provided half rent and in a couple of cases provided no rent for the next six months for local businesses, which is a really positive step. We're looking to advocate to commercial property owners across the city to be doing the same and then in particular, to then be able to provide that onto their tenants as well. So from providing that to their tenants, all commercial property owners have access to our financial hardship support. When we have that conversation with commercial property owners, we'd be asking them to provide some level of certainty or at least an acknowledgement that they'll be providing those savings onto their tenants as well. There's a concept that exists at the moment that there's, the pain exists right across the community and sharing wherever possible and everyone leaning in to support each other at this time would be really important. I'm going to ask two more questions and then we might finish there. There'll be opportunities to ask further questions, both via the social media platforms or via our website. If you go to the Newcastle, City of Newcastle website, there's a large icon that's got the COVID nineteen. There's a whole range of information from our emergency response team, but there's also our resilience package and details included in there. So final two questions, where do we get details about the learning packages?
So the access to Lynda is through the Newcastle library page. So if you get in there and then we'll be working to make sure that that's a prominent and easy-to-find link. Lynda itself has some pretty well-curated Lynda itself has some pretty well-curated pathways and programmes, and we'll be augmenting that with some, some that we think are a bit more locally specific. In regard to the second training programme, that will, we'll have some comms in, in market in the next few weeks around that as we, we're just assembling the providers and we need to run through an EOI process to make sure that the training providers that are supporting that, that, that online learning are locally based and really fitting the bill for what the city needs.
Yeah, great. On that, we're still working with our local suppliers to scope up and define what that will look like. Just to follow up another question here around the Lynda courses, there'll also be more information that'll be pushed out via our communication channels mid to late this week. Final question, can council assist and improve home delivery services for food, groceries and essentials for the public?
That's a really great question, and we are aware through our community planning team and the great work they do in the, in the community sector about these emerging needs. Our response to that is to either support through the funding streams, those not-for-profits to, to ramp up themselves. But secondly, and I think more importantly, at that community and neighbourhood level, is through the Lean-in Newe app. That's exactly the type of social action that we'll be incentivising. So certainly people should stay tuned for more information about Lean-in Newe and the types of social action that exist in there. If you are the type of person who wants to support your people in your local neighbourhood, whether it's taking in the wheelie bins of your elderly neighbour who is in isolation, picking up some groceries and delivering it for a friend, or organising some kind of community activity that will generate a bit of a sense of belonging and ensure wellbeing, this is the place for you. The flip side of that is that we're looking for local businesses to be listed on the platform to offer the rewards that the, the sort of the economic points incentives accrue towards. If you're interested in that, if you're staying open or you are moving to an online delivery model for your business offering, please reach out because we need to make sure that, that app delivers benefit to local business.
And just to emphasise as well, like Nathaniel talked about, is that we now ask for businesses to be providing discounts in this space. An incentive might look like a two-for-one offering at your local business. And the intention would be that the recipient would pay for one, and then the council would back the other half of that to be able to provide that local business support as well.
And our platform provider, Green Bay, and ourselves are able to work with you on what, on how to structure those incentives and rewards.
We've had a few more questions come through. We'll seek to respond to them via our social media channels as well. And really encourage that this is not the end of the conversation at all. We're really keen to hear your feedback, get your input. As we've said throughout, ideas are still coming through. There's new evidence that exists right across the world that we can learn from and apply in our local context. So we'll be seeking to listen and hear from you guys and also respond to that evidence that we receive and act on that wherever we can. So please keep asking questions. This is about working together to help our city's business community, our city's not-for-profit and community organisations to minimise the impact of this, of this crisis. And as Nathaniel said, to maximise this acceleration of our recovery when that time comes. So, we want to thank you for joining us today. We also want to acknowledge and thank that we're, that we're sitting at INX this morning, and we've been able to produce this webinar, and we appreciate their support. Have the ability to have been doing this remotely and online if there was a full lockdown in place, noting that there's just two of us in this room this morning, so we pass on our thanks to them. Thank you to you guys for engaging, and we'll be in contact again soon.
Yes, please continue to observe all of the, the health-based regulations and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.